For 2022. If I could have everyone, well, if anyone has a cellphone on first, please turn it off because it wrecks up the videoing. Then after you do that, if everyone would please join me for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Abbey, roll, please.
Philkins, here. Rice?
Here.
Bunce?
Here.
Bosher? Absent. Baumann?
Here.
Fent?
Here.
Putvin?
Here.
And that's it.
Okay, before I ask for approval of agenda for this evening, I'd like to make a change, please, of moving new business to item three and the public hearing down to four. It would be approved as amended.
Support.
Roll, please.
Rice?
Yes.
Bosher, sorry, it's gone. Bunce?
Yes.
Fent?
Yes.
Baumann?
Yes.
Philkins?
Yes.
And Putvin?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have approval of the May 23rd, 2022 minutes. For those of you in our public viewing audience, we have not been here since May 23rd. That's why you missed us because we weren't here. So anyway, approval of the May 23rd, 2022 meeting minutes.
Make that motion to approve.
My second.
Mayor and Mr. Rice, enroll, please.
Baumann?
Yes.
Fent?
Yes.
Bunce?
Yes.
Philkins?
Yes.
Putvin?
Yes.
And Rice?
Yes.
Thank you.
So we're going to start here with new business. Item A, 609 East Garfield, a lot split, property line adjustment. Having read that, Mr. Coy will guide us.
This one is mine. I would ask that all of you turn to the page in your staff report that has the GIS on it. It may have all four properties that we're going to discuss tonight. The two cases are just very, very similar, but we do need to take them one at a time. Both property owners are present, Mr. Berg and Mr. Theobald, and what we have here, it's a property line adjustment. Property line adjustments, if they're not in a platted area and they meet all the conditions, we just administratively approve them. But our ordinance does mention planning commission review prior to administrative-type approval of a property line adjustment. So what we basically look at is make sure that the, what's being done does not create any new non-conforming lots. And in this case, the R3 Zone District, what really applies here would be a non-conforming lot that would be of less than 50 feet in width. So what we have in the first one is Mr. Berg, who owns the home at 609 East Garfield, would like to basically, I'm assuming, sell 12 feet of his 66-foot-wide lot, which would still leave a 54-foot-wide lot. There is plenty of room between the two homes to meet setback standards. This in turn would take the non-conforming 33-foot-wide lot at 607 East Garfield. It would increase the size of it up to 45 feet. It certainly would still be slightly non-conforming, but it would be a lot closer to being a conforming-sized lot than it is now. This additional 12 feet will allow them to do some improvements to 607 East Garfield, whether it be landscaping, maybe porch decking, that sort of a thing. So essentially, what we have here is we're asking, staff recommends a property line adjustment. Basically, 609 East Garfield would sell 12 feet of property to the owner of 607 East Garfield, creating a situation where 609 is still conforming and 607 will be a wider lot, which again will allow them to make remodeling, different types of improvements possible, which they cannot do now. That's really all I have to say.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Any questions for Mr. Coy before Dale has to leave us?
Okay, well, I must excuse myself from this vote since Mr. Theobald and I are business partners and I want to avoid any conflict of interest or avoid causing him any problems in the future, so I'll take another seat for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
A move that we approve the lot split as requested.
And I'll second it.
Not a public hearing.
I see it, yeah.
Otherwise, sure. Okay. Okay, we have a, let's see.
I'll second it.
I think Mr. Bunce did, but Mr. Baumann and/or Bunce or Fent, anyway. Roll call, please.
Ready? Baumann?
Yes.
Philkins?
Yes.
Bunce?
Yes.
Fent?
Yes.
And Putvin?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, Daisy. Tiny lot.
Okay. Item B under new business. So now we have 702/706 Lincoln, again, lot split, property line adjustment, and we're back to Mr. Coy.
Yes, this is a very similar situation. In this case, Mr. Theobald owns both properties. And what he wants to do, and I got to look at the number again, is at 12 feet, J? 16 feet. Basically wishes to, I'm assuming it's not a sale because he owns both, but he wants to do a property line adjustment of 16 feet. What this will do is still create a conforming-sized lot at 706. It would reduce that lot size from 100 feet to 84 feet, which is still 34 feet wider than the minimum required. In turn, his home that he lives in at 702 Lincoln, he definitely would like to do some remodeling, possibly addition, expanding that, or possibly building a new garage, and would like that additional 16 feet so that he may be able to do that. Again, you can't tell the scale on this very well, but there is more than enough space, spatial distance between the two homes that by transferring, adjusting the 16 feet, the home at 706 will certainly more than meet the side yard setback requirement that is a part of the, to be a conforming-sized lot. So it's a very similar situation. Again, it will allow 702 Lincoln Street to do some remodeling, possibly home addition that he would not be able to do otherwise.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Coy, anyone? Take a motion, then.
I, motion to approve the split of the lot.
I'll support.
And the mayor, roll, please.
Putvin?
Yes.
Fent?
Yes.
Bunce?
Yes.
Philkins?
Yes.
And Baumann?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Abby.
Well, the nice thing is if he owns both, he gets along with his neighbor, right?
Yeah, hopefully. Welcome back, Dale.
Cheers, sir.
Okay, so yeah, you guys can depart if you like, and always a pleasure to see you.
Click on the blue bubble down below, it should make it full.
There we are. Hi, Laura.
Good evening.
I think most of you have met Laura before.
Yes, hi, Laura.
Hi there.
Okay, now, we are moving on to a public hearing. So we have an ordinance amending the city zoning ordinance regarding adult-use marijuana establishments and medical marijuana facilities. Having read this, now we're going to Marcus.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the Planning Commission. My remarks are going to be brief this evening. I know that Laura will diligently fill in any gaps, especially any salient details that I may miss or otherwise botch. But to provide a little bit of context as to why we're here this evening requesting a recommendation from the Planning Commission, I can advise that it's anticipated that perhaps a little bit later this fall, the Cadillac City Council is going to be considering an adjustment to the licensing component of our marijuana program. And the city wants to make sure that if such a consideration to the licensing component changes, that we are still very well protected in terms of the ability for there to be restrictions or restraints essentially in place through zoning, which is what we're looking at doing here, so that it doesn't become sort of an opening of the floodgates for marijuana retailer shops to just open up anywhere and everywhere. And by creating a much greater spatial separation between the properties, that protects the city's interests, which is to keep the licensing restriction essentially low. And so you might ask yourself, oh, why in the heck are we even thinking about doing this? And the reason why we're even thinking about doing this is because there are four licenses, retail-type licenses, that the city created and that the city has already issued. Of those four, two shops have already opened, two shops have not opened. The two shops that have not opened are those that are under the medical category, and they've indicated that they really need an adult-use license as well as the medical license to make the whole operation, to make a cash flow, to make it work. And so, in looking at a way to do this without necessarily putting ourselves in an increased legal risk of getting into muck with potentially other vendors, the potential solution would be to adjust the licensing by removing the caps. And the concern is that, oh my God, if we do that, and just do that without doing this step first, which is to create a much wider spatial separation between the two, we've just opened up the opportunity for, the potential for all sorts of additional shops to come to town, which is not the desire of the city to do. And so whether or not council ever adjusts anything with the licensing, what we're asking Planning Commission to consider doesn't put us in a bad spot at all. I mean, we still don't have any additional licenses other than the ones that have already been created and issued, and if nothing ever changes, then nothing ever changes, and we've taken a few minutes of your time this evening to essentially provide us with the safety blanket that we're looking for. So I don't know, Laura, if you would like to try to clarify any of what I just threw out there or not, but that's the background context.
Yeah, I think that was an excellent summary, Marcus, thank you. And that's exactly right. This likely would not reach the level of being considered for approval by City Council unless City Council was also going to approve a regulatory ordinance either increasing or eliminating the cap on the number of marijuana retailers allowed. So it is sort of a protective measure because, of course, a zoning ordinance amendment has to go through a bit of a different process than simply an amendment to the regulatory part of the city code. So this tees it up so that if that is City Council's desire, then this part has been taken care of, and ultimately, City Council could consider approving this at the same time as any change to the licensing or regulatory ordinance. So what's before you and what's before the public in this public hearing is not the broad question of whether the City Council should increase or eliminate the cap, but rather whether there should be a buffer moving forward, a physical space buffer between retailers of 1,500 feet that set forth in this fairly short amendment that would measure that 1,500 feet from property line to property line, oh, excuse me, no, I take that back. For that section would be from building to building. So the closest points of the two buildings would be how you would measure the 1,500 feet, and that would apply just between marijuana retailers, not between a marijuana retailer and some other type of retail store, like a, I don't know, clothing store or something like that. So what's before you is fairly narrow, and I think Marcus accurately explained the context for it. So I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
If, Laura, if the state changes requirements for adult slash medical and they can be combined, what would happen in our situation?
Right, so if, and that has been something that's been discussed for quite some time, whether the state is ultimately going to combine these license types. I think that's difficult in terms of amending the statutes, but pretending that happens, this is not intended to prevent a medical and retailer from operating in the same location. This is a matter of distancing different buildings. So to the extent I believe what the city would consider permitting to address those medical licensees that can't feasibly operate without an adult-use license, is you could have equivalent licenses, which I, you know, would be, which is currently permitted under state law, to have a medical and adult use in the same facility. This wouldn't prevent that. So I'm not sure a change would make a difference to this issue down the road. If the state later combined these, we might have other revisions we have to make frankly to the ordinance, and we just have to cross that bridge when we get there.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else have any input?
I struggle with this one, I guess maybe for staff and maybe for the city's attorney. But as described by Mike, or Mike, Marcus, the, this issue is technically unrelated and disconnected from the regulatory, potential for regulatory change, except it is relevant there, too. And I have a significant problem, maybe it's just this Planning Commission's interaction with those past licensees, one in particular, and I have a particular problem with that changing just because the deal was known at the time. And to the extent this issue is relevant to it, perhaps the zoning ordinance should be more like 5,000 feet or 10,000 feet. It's pretty easy to, whether that's appropriate or not, it's a totally different question, but that's just my issue with the ordinance itself and not necessarily with, this is a fine change perhaps in and of itself.
And if I may, so I do have distances between the pre-existing. We picked 1,500 feet knowing that it falls well within. And if you can just humor me for the next 30 seconds. So the distance between Loom and Dune Grass is 4,567 feet. The distance between Dune Grass and the old State Farm office, which is one of the potential sites, is 3,782 feet. And the distance between the old State Farm office and Allegra Printing is 1,770 feet. And so, you know, I would punt this back to Laura, but certainly, you know, we can adjust on the fly yet tonight if the Planning Commission would like to recommend a different spatial separation number, and if we needed to essentially grandfather in those pre-existing sites, I don't think that that would be an issue. But so as a, for instance, if you wanted it to be 5,000 feet, okay, you know.
I think specifically I'm in.
Fine with me.
Grandfathering those sites in.
I know, I hear you, but.
Yeah, they would be, they would likely be prior lawful non-conforming uses in the sense that they've already gotten that license at a time and at those locations before there was a distance requirement.
Right, so.
Joe, is there some history that I'm not aware of?
We had a very long Planning Commission meeting with one of the medical marijuana licensees who did not want the medical marijuana license and claimed for two-plus hours that they couldn't make any money doing it and wasted the time of the commission while never opening that which they got a site plan to do. So some of it's a little bit, the deal was well-known, you know, there were others who lost out on those licenses, and a change to that plan frankly is, I think, unfair and to some extent, I have some level of philosophical change.
Yeah, gotcha.
Exactly. But the hard thing is, this is a good change. Having some limitation to the distances, I think, is a fine change.
Appreciate, appreciate your comments for sure, so.
The 1,500 came from not creating, trying to attempt to create a non-conformity because the shortest distance was 1,700 feet, so it was 200 feet under that 1,700. That's where that, where that number came from.
Now, you said that from Allegra to the old State Farm office was only 1,100?
No, 1,770.
1,700. Okay, wasn't one of them 11?
Nope.
Okay, so all were conforming with this.
Oh, we're, we came up with that distant, thinking about the two marijuana licenses that are out there and where they want to put their businesses. So.
Or at least did a few years ago.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, but.
And they don't, they don't need new site plans, wouldn't they?
Hmm, I don't know, I think they would be used, yeah.
I would think they might. Been a while.
It would stop to go through the.
So this, the action tonight, though, would be to create a recommendation that would then go back to City Council for consideration with then another public hearing at the City Council level. And as Laura had mentioned, you know, it may or may not sync up with then another separate regulatory process that Council will also be considering that involves, again, another public hearing process at the same time. And even, you know, or I should say, notwithstanding the regulatory component of this whole thing, even if that just dies on the vine and doesn't go forward, this doesn't hurt us. I mean, this is a protective measure, and all it does is really send sort of a clear signal that, you know, while Cadillac is embracing, you know, these uses, we're doing so still in a very conservative manner and one that we're otherwise protecting other business uses first, so.
And for reference purposes, if you wanted to use this new distancing requirement, how many more could there be? Roughly, there could be one additional on the Mitchell Street corridor in addition to the four that are already in place, and there likely could be one on the west side. So you would be looking at a, just on the spacing part alone, you might be looking at two more possible retail outlets. And of course, it would also depend on the fact that they could negotiate on the right properties that were midway between the other locations, which may or may not be possible.
There has to be available property to do any of this, right?
But that's only assuming the licensing number increases.
Right, right. There's a lot of ifs, so.
I would hate to see that, you just said based on the 1,500, we could end up with five in the city?
That would be total of six.
No, in the, I mean, in downtown proper. One out in Cadillac West, but there could be five.
Yeah, there'd be five along Mitchell Street corridor.
Well, not, not five separate locations, you're talking about licenses.
No, well, it would be licenses.
Right?
I guess I don't understand the question.
So you have.
We have four right now, retail outlets.
Well, yes and no. You have four licenses that are split between the four sites. So you would add one more site, potentially one more site.
One more site.
Right. Potentially one more site.
Then is licensed, so five total.
Correct.
No.
Correct. Yes.
Allegra?
Yes, four.
State Farm?
Right.
The two that are there, and one more.
Right.
And there's only four licenses.
Right, at this point.
At this point.
Right. But in, just clarifying everything, because I want to make sure that, that when you replay the tape, everyone understands.
Yes.
Each site can have up to two licenses. So just understand that there's a medical license and there is an adult-use license that are allowed to co-locate. So each site can have two licenses. Now, as of right now, as we're sitting here today, those licenses don't exist. So, you know, looking at sort of the first domino, the first domino is how do we protect the interests of the city so that you don't have these popping up all over the place?
5,000 feet.
And the way to protect the interests of the city is to put in a spatial separation large enough so that it becomes very difficult under zoning to have multiple shops popping up all over the place. And so to do so and to keep the current licensed shops within conformance, that's where the 1,500 feet got recommended or came from. There's zero shops on the west end of town. If licensing were to become available for there to be a shop there and one were to open up in the strip mall, just as a, for instance, if you were to look at 1,500 feet from the strip mall, I'm not sure where they would be because you're outside of the city limit. And so it's, it becomes a one and done. If one were to, if one were to pop open on the west end of town, just again because of the geography. On the east end of town, John said that it's possible you might be able to get another shop, however, there would have to be available land for that shop to open. Just because there might be that, that possibility doesn't mean that it's going to happen, so.
And they would also have to have proper zoning, too, you know.
Right.
There's only certain districts that allow it, and so.
So what was the feet between Loom and Dune?
Loom and Dune Grass is 4,567 feet. Dune Grass and the old State Farm office is 3,782 feet. And the old State Farm office and Allegra Printing is 1,770 feet.
And they'd be grandfathered in, correct?
No.
Or they wouldn't?
They would.
Yeah, they're still within the guideline.
Yeah, with their medical.
We changed it, they wouldn't be.
No.
No, it would still be because the change is 1,500 feet.
1,500, so.
I mean, you could, you could do, you know, 1,769 feet, and then they would still be, okay.
No, I'm thinking if they decide on 5,000 feet.
If you put it, if you put it up to 5,000 feet, then I think, as Laura mentioned, they would already be grandfathered in based upon how they got the licensing before the code change.
Okay. Kevin, the terminology would actually be an existing non-conformity, which could continue. The term is not grandfathered, but.
Right, prior lawful non-conforming use.
We don't, we don't have that term in our ordinance.
So if you wanted to make it, I mean, John, I don't know what the threshold John was to ensure that not even a single additional one could pop. Was it 2,000 feet, 3,000 feet? Do you have any idea?
No, I would have to double check on that.
My guess is that if you made it 5,000 feet, that that would negate any possibility for there to be any additional license holders within that.
I guess if you took the longest distance and divided by two, that would give you the number.
Okay, so that would be.
2,800 feet.
2,800 feet, thank you, Mike.
Actually.
So Marcus, what, how does the, okay.
Yep.
One Maverick Mechanical building fall into this?
That was a micro business.
Different zoning, different licensing, completely outside of the scope of what we're looking at.
Okay.
All right. So, so if you were to make it. So, if you were to make it 2283, because that would be half of 4,567. 2284, that would, according to Mike, that would result in not having any additional opportunity on the east side of town for there to be another, another one pop open. And that would be the most protective way to move it forward. Do we not want to have another one?
Well, and if I can jump in here real quick, I think that kind of bleeds into what city council will be looking at, but there's kind of an open legal question out there about how much you want to try to focus on the number when you're determining buffers. Because if your real goal is to have a numerical limit, then arguably, you're right back in the position of having to have a competitive process. So, I guess I would just, you know, caution that I'm not sure the city's goal should be to say, we want to only allow this certain number because that would require a competitive process. If you require a competitive process, then those, you know, then that's fine. But the city just needs to understand that that's what it would look like. It really wouldn't be uncapped. It really wouldn't be that existing medical licensees could simply apply for and receive an adult use license. So, there's some implications there to looking at it from that perspective. And I think the probably better way is how much space do you want between establishments? Not what is the net numerical effect of it.
So, I think the mayor may have a motion.
Wait, have you had the public hearing yet? I apologize if I.
No, I haven't got that far yet.
Don't recommend it yet, let's have a public hearing.
So, it shouldn't take me long, but, okay. At this time, I'd like to open the public hearing based on what we've been discussing here with the ordinance to amend minimum distances here between certain marijuana businesses. So, anyone in our audience that would like to come and say either yea or nay, any of the above, but our audience is pretty null. So, I guess at this time, seeing no one coming forwards, I will go ahead and close the public hearing. There. Now, we can entertain a motion if someone so desires or has any more questions.
So, Joe, you were just going to say something about.
Oh, no, I was concerned about the already, or the legal non-conforming use that we might be creating by expanding the amount of space. And maybe that's okay in getting to the same outcome that we're hoping for. That was the only thing I was going to mention.
I would make a motion to move forward with the spatial distancing at 2,284 feet.
Support?
All right, roll call. Putvin?
Yes.
Fent?
Yes.
Bunce?
Yes.
Philkins?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Thank you.
Miss one?
How do we get the vote?
Sorry.
He can this time.
Rice?
Yes.
Sorry, I still let you bark down.
I just wanted to get that on.
Okay, so the new number was what?
2,284.
2,84, okay, perfect.
Thank you.
So, that's recommendation to council, okay. All righty, old business being none. Any board member comments? Everybody got their Halloween candy? I don't know. Okay. No board member comments, we're good?
I got one.
Yes, sir.
I'm pleased to see that one of the influential women of northern Michigan is our mayor and our new president of the Chamber of Commerce. And it's just nice to have two community members that.
No, I don't yet.
Yeah, they showed up in the.
The Traverse City Record Eagle.
Record Eagle, yeah.
Did a nominating, you know, people nominated and most influential women in northern Michigan. And Caitlin over at the chamber, who's the president, and myself received nominations and we were honored with that.
Congratulations.
And the write-up and the brochure that were the publication that they put out was very complimentary.
And how long ago was that? Because I haven't seen that locally, right? Oh, yesterday. Very new hot news.
It is hot news.
Perfect, well, thank you for that. Anyone else have any hot news? Or cold news, it doesn't matter, but, okay. Guess not. Any communications staff at all?
No.
Obviously, no public comments, no public. Unless, this is a possible new person, that is Ms. Peggy, so I'm, hi, Ms. Peggy.
Possible for this board?
Yes.
Now, I wish she wouldn't have come first, now you don't want to be on.
No other business and whatnot, we will adjourn.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.